Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being here this evening. My name is Kylie McCormick. I'm the president of the Casper League of Women Voters. And I want to thank all of you for coming out to be informed when you go to the polls on August 16th, unless you're voting early, which you can do now. And I also want to thank all of the candidates for being here this evening and being willing to share your position with all of us. As well as Lisa Scroggins and the Neptuna County Public Library for co-hosting this event with us and for giving us a space to hold this candidate forum. Thank you so much. And to Beth Wurden for agreeing to moderate this event with me as well. And I just want to say a couple of words about the League of Women Voters before I turn this over to Beth to describe how this forum will look and what will be going on. So, the League of Women Voters, we came out of the movement, the Woman Suffrage Movement, that fight to recognize women's right to vote. And here in Wyoming, we know better than anybody else that there were men and women in that fight and that that crossed party lines. Those are values that the League of Women Voters tries to live up to to this day. Our membership is open to everyone regardless of gender, ages 16 and up. And we do have our paper in the back here for anybody that's interested in joining the League of Women Voters. And we are also a nonprofit organization if you are interested in supporting our voter services like Vote411, a great website where you can learn more about all of the candidates sitting here, as well as all of the candidates who will be on your ballot this year, as well as these candidate forums. We will be very happy for any donations to help support these events, as well as your perspectives if you join the League. So, thank you so much. We look forward to the wonderful forum this evening.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can men join the Women League of Voters?
They certainly can. Men were essential in the fight for women having their rights recognized, and men are essential for the League of Women Voters to this day. You can ask two of our wonderful male leaders back there, Jim and Dan.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That's a hot mic. Okay, so I'm bad cop tonight. I'm in charge of giving you guys the rules and letting you know what the format is. So, the format is as follows. Each of you will get a one and a half minute introduction, and then we'll dive into the questions. And the questions are, each candidate will have one minute to answer the questions. And then at the very end, you'll have the ability to do a closing statement for one minute as well. Betsy O'Neal, here from here at the library, is our timekeeper. And so she has a yellow card, which means you're halfway through, and then a red card, which means stop, Terry.
I've got so much to say.
Now, I will say that we only have time for about five to six questions if all the candidates stick with that one minute for answering. So, don't feel like you have to answer for exactly one minute. That might allow us time for some other questions. We do have some questions prepared by the League. And then we're also asking audience members, if you have a question that you would like to ask, and we've already got a few. There are cards and writing implements over on the table in the back. Feel free to write something down and bring it to us, and we'll try to get your question in as well. You have mics that you will share, if you don't mind. There's one at this end, one at that end. And we'll do the whole rotating thing where Paul will answer the first question, then we'll go down. Cheyenne will answer the second question first, and then we'll go down. So, you guys are in a good place to not have to go first.
Do you want us to stand?
That is totally up to you. You don't have to stand. You can sit. It's up to you.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Yeah. Okay. We do have the candidates separated by the office that they are running for. So, you have the eight that are sitting on this left side, who are running for the four-year term, and then these...
Two and a half.
Two, and maybe three, are running for the two-year term. Any questions or anything? Okay, I think then we're ready to start. So, with that, we'll start with Commissioner Bertollio to do your introduction for a minute and a half, and then we'll just go down the line.
Good evening. My name is Paul Bertollio. I am currently the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. And I'd first like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum. It's really important for the public to get to see all the candidates. I have been on the commission now for a little over five years. I was appointed and was elected almost four years ago. I currently serve on a lot of boards, too numerous to mention, but I have an extensive background in local government. Besides county commission, I served on the city council for almost 17 years. I was the mayor three times. I understand how things work, and there's something to be said for experience. It is very difficult to jump in. I thought when I was from city council going to county commission, I knew it all. It was shocking to realize how little I really knew how the municipalities versus counties actually worked. So, it was a big learning experience. I'm very focused on public safety, infrastructure. I think those are what is most important in local government. We still have to have the amenities that make our communities livable. So, there is a balance there, but I really do like to focus on what local governments' basic needs are. So, thank you.
And I didn't get the card. But thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cheyenne Houston, and I'm running for Neptuna County Commissioner. I've lived here in Neptuna County about 10 years. I moved here in 2012 with my husband, and we currently live on the property that he grew up on. So, we do have some roots here in Neptuna County. Like many of you here in Neptuna County, I am a small business owner, and I am also a veteran. Some of you may recognize me. I own the antique store in Mills called Off the Beaten Path. I've had that store for nine years now, and I've had it in Mills the whole time. I did 21 years in the Air Force. I've split my time between active-duty Air Force, and then I did my last 12 years as an active guardsman with the Wyoming Air National Guard down in Cheyenne. I decided to run for county commissioner because of all the hoops I had to jump through to build and do some improvements on our property. So, I'm here to fight for property rights for property owners. I'd just like to say that I've had a lot of honors and privileges in my life. I was able to serve my country, and I also served the great state of Wyoming. And I'm here to humbly ask you for the opportunity and your vote to serve the people in Neptuna County. Thank you.
My name is Dallas Laird. I was born here, raised here. Raised by my grandmother, lived in North Casper, went to Dean Morgan, NC, Casper College, went to the University of Wyoming, got a degree there in journalism, and then I got my law degree there. And I then, for a little while, went down to Cheyenne and worked for Thira Thompson in the Secretary of State's office. Came back to Casper because all my family lived here. All my family's been born here, except my grandparents, who came here in about 1910 or something like that. I love the people of Wyoming. I am Wyoming. I fought for Wyoming people my entire career, and I'm going to continue doing it. Thank you very much.
My name's Jim Millen. Really didn't prep for this today. I was busy taking care of MR1 and MR2 zoning rewrite up on the mountain, so that held me up all day. I apologize. Me in a nutshell, my family's from here, Neptuna County. We're fourth generation. I'm fourth generation. We homesteaded here from an ag. Grew up a ranch brat. Learned a lot of hard work and hard knocks out there on the ranch. We're currently farming. I'm an area manager for a oilfield service company at this point for the Rocky Mountain, Alaska area. And then I've got my kids on top of that, the farm on top of that, so I'm a little busy, but not busy enough to make sure, taking care of what I first ran on. This is my first term currently. And I ran on property rights as well in the county because it frustrated me. We're in the midst of that currently, and hopefully we get it done before. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this and carrying on. Stop before the red, too.
Good evening. I'm Peter Nicolason. Also, thanks to the library and League of Women Voters for putting this on. I think it's a good opportunity for candidates to get to contact and communicate with people that we don't get to every day. So, this is a good opportunity. I'm Peter Nicolason. I was born here in Casper 50 years ago. My wife Pam and I have raised three kids here in the county. And, let's see, my main job is running the ranch with my brother. Over the years, I've also been an attorney, have started and operated a number of different businesses. And I believe my experience will help me get things done that matter to this community. Things like lowering property taxes, things like improving healthcare, and things like growing the economy. I'm also a lifelong Republican, and I believe in private property rights, individual liberty, limited taxes, and limited government. Those are the things that have made Neptuna County great, and frankly, those are the things that have, since the late 1800s, allowed my family to prosper. And those are the things that are going to allow this community and our kids to prosper. And I hope that our kids, one of them is here tonight, I hope that our kids find Neptuna County an attractive place. Thank you.
I'm going to break the mold, just not pressure everybody else who's standing up pressing Terry, okay? My name's Tom Rodesvich. I am a local family medicine physician. I went to the University of Wyoming after graduating from Rock Springs High School. From Rock Springs High School, Sweetwater County, went to University Wyoming after some work here and there. I delivered packages for the UPS. I ended up in Creighton University for my medical school training. I ended up in Casper with a University of Wyoming Family Medicine Residency Program, where I worked first as a physician for the Community Health Center, and then transitioned into a faculty role at the university. So, I trained family medicine physicians for 15 years. I burned out on that job, and I transitioned. I now work for Wyoming Recovery, which is a drug and alcohol recovery, which quite frankly has given me a new perspective on life in Neptuna County and the needs of our citizens, many who are having trouble but have a chance to do better. I've worked a number of jobs in Wyoming. I haven't worked them all, but I've docked sheep, and I've mowed hay, and I've been a cowboy. I've paid $687 a month with my wife. She did half the work, didn't get any of the pay. So, I've done a number of jobs, but this job has been particularly fulfilling. I've served on a number of boards here in town, the Department of Health, most notably. And I'm currently on the Wyoming Wildlife Federation Board. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kiana Smith. I am currently a trustee on the Neptuna County School Board. I was elected in 2018 to that position, and I was born and raised here in Casper. I have always loved government politics and found in recent years especially a love for a local government. And that is why I am here today and running for this position, hoping to move it into bigger, better things with the county commission. So, I really have two main priorities that I hope to focus on if I am elected. The first is responsibility. Essentially, that just means making sure that we are spending taxpayer dollars wisely and, you know, using those funds in a way that benefits everybody in the community, as well as maybe looking into new and more creative ways to use taxpayer funds so that we can create revenue without having to raise taxes. Second priority that I hope to focus on is transparency. Transparency is something that has always been important to me ever since before I was on the school board. That really looks like not just making information available to people, though that is a really big part of transparency, but also involving the community members in the decisions that are being made at the government, at the local government level. So, I hope to make sure that everybody's voices are heard. So, if I am elected, those are really the two main focuses that I would have, and I do ask for your vote on August 16th, and thank you all for being here.
My name is Terry Wayne Gerder, and I've been... My dad moved us here to Casper when I was three years old. I have eight brothers and sisters. Most of them have moved on. I have one sister here, Rosely Wrestler. But anyway, my dad was a wheat farmer up in North Dakota. His parents were wheat farmers in Odessa, Ukraine. And we are German, but they opened Odessa for a lot of the Germans for land rush. And then when the Communist Party took over, they sent all the Germans back home. But anyway, I have always been interested in local government. I've been on the county commission before, as you probably all know. I've also been on the city council. I volunteer for Mills on wheels as a driver, two to three days a week. And I've been on, I was on the CNFR when we brought him to Casper, and I was a county liaison in the CNFR for 17 years. And that's one of the best rodeos I've ever seen. But anyway, I'd appreciate your vote, and before it comes up, I want you to know I'm all for a library. I've always been for a new library, and I think we need a new health building. So, thank you very much, folks.
Hi, my name is Rob Hendry, and I'm a third-generation Wyoming rancher west of town. My grandpa came in 1906, and we've been there ever since. Dad built on it, and then we built on the ranch. My wife Leslie and son Jared and I run the ranch now. It's a commercial cattle operation. I've been, about in 2001, I started an oilfield service business. And I've got two employees now. I've still got them. It's pretty slow, but we do dirt work in the oil companies. We just did a location north of Shoshone around Bonneville, and they're drilling a hole there. So, it's kind of diversified. I've been in a lot of different things. I've been a commissioner since 2006, and instrumental in building the Townsend Justice Center, the Juvenile Distention Center. We worked on the front of the fairgrounds, building out there. We've done a lot of things to help this county move forward, and I'd like to continue in that. We've got a couple of road projects that I'd like to see done, that I helped get going and help start. So, I've got a couple of those that I'd like to see finished, as well as some infrastructure up on the mountain. It's been a long time coming, so I'd like to see that happen. So, again, Rob Hendry, and I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kurt Simpson Jr. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the library for having us here tonight, people for joining the crowd, come to see us, see what we think. I'd like to be your county commissioner. I was adopted at birth here in 1952, and in Casper my entire life. Spent the first 15 years of my working life in the oilfield, bouncing around various different kinds of trucks. Finally gave up on that, decided to have a life, took a day job, wound up selling automotive parts and paint for 15 years after that, and bounced around a little bit, finally got to where I could retire and did that. Moved into the county in 89, and have been a resident here for all of that. I'd like to see some more transparency from the county commission in general. Thank you.
And to solve our microphone issue a little bit, maybe we'll have our microphone cup here and split it in the middle of our room.
Give it to me, or...
No, so you can have this one, and then you five, and then you five.
So, for candidate Houston. In contrast to our city and town councils, the position of county commissioner is a partisan office. Once elected, can you envision any circumstance where your party affiliation would influence how you would vote on issues coming before the commission?
Probably the number-one area where I would see where my party influence would influence my vote is when it comes to spending. So, as a Republican, I believe in low taxes, limited government, and also fiscal responsibility. So, those would, those characteristics would influence my decisions, especially when it comes to spending. We are steward of the taxpayers' money. It is, when I was in the military, they'd always say, "Well, why are you being so stingy? It's not your money." Well, yes, it is my money. I'm a taxpayer. You're a taxpayer. It is, the money belongs to the people in Neptuna County, and as a commissioner, it is my responsibility to spend that money judiciously and not foolishly. Thank you.
Same question? My party would absolutely be involved. I mean, you know, I've been a lifelong Republican, although my grandparents and my parents were Democrats. When I got out of law school, I changed, and I didn't know that they were going to talk to me again or not. But the point of it is, is we've got to stop spending money. We've got to stop raising taxes. We have to take care of our people. We have to be kind to our people. We have to listen to what their concerns are, and then go do something about it. Now, my whole career, when I was on the city council, you know, I dealt with budgets that were three times the size of the county budget. And so, I understand money. One of the things we did is we hired a city manager who stopped the bleeding as far as spending on the city council. When I got on there, they were spending $4 million a year out of their savings account. And like my grandmother said, she had this rainy day fund, but it never rained hard enough to spend that money. And they were spending it at the city, and it got changed within six months.
Thank you, candidate.
So, that's going to happen here, too, as well. Could you do me and the audience a favor and repeat?
Most definitely. In contrast to our city and town councils, the position of county commissioner is a partisan office. Once elected, can you envision any circumstance where your party affiliation would influence how you would vote on issues coming before the commission?
So, as a commissioner and as a Republican, where that ties together is if a fellow commissioner or another elected retires, leaves the county or whatever, then the committee comes together for that party, selects three nominees, and then it comes to the county board. That's where it's be, and that's basically where it'll stop. I have my own values. They line up with the Republican Party, and that's why I'm a Republican. Second Amendment, property rights, low taxes, the gamut, basically. Fiscal conservative. So, that's where I'm at. It's not necessarily because of the party and how I'll vote. I'll vote because I've got to look at the man in the mirror.
My answer is no. The party isn't going to get in the way, but values do inform my decisions. Values do inform how I look at the world, and they're going to influence me and the decisions I make.
So, I'm the odd man out as a Democrat here, and I'll just say that I believe that things that... What? Yeah, so, odd man out, I'm a Democrat, and the reason I'm a Democrat is because I read the Wyoming State Democratic Platform, and I said, "I believe almost everything in that, almost everything in that." And, but in general, I really do believe that a partnership of government makes our lives better. Interstate highways, Social Security, Medicare, public education, land-grant universities, these are the things that make us great. And individualism is just fine, but we need to come together, and that's what we say in the Democratic Party.
So, working, there we go. So, local government is a beautiful thing in the sense that most of the decisions...
I think we'll be down to one, one microphone.
It's all our budget that we're allowed for. So, most of the decisions made at the local government level are generally nonpartisan. They're usually fairly common sense, right? You are needing to spend money wisely because it is the taxpayers' money, so you want to make sure that you're not wasting it and that you are benefiting, that you're benefiting everybody. You want to make sure that you're doing what makes the most sense for the most number of people. That's fairly common sense. I also am a Republican, so I do agree with the basic principles of the Republican Party. I don't necessarily see that as something that would influence the decisions that I'm making day-to-day on a party level. These are just common sense things. And, yeah, essentially that, that's what I would say. Just do what's best for the county and for everybody who lives here.
As you well know, I was a Democrat most of my life, up until way, 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 way back in September, I switched. Anyway, I was always a pretty conservative Democrat. I was always a John Kennedy Democrat. John Kennedy, this day and age, would have been known as a Republican. The reason why I switched is because, well, I'll tell you what. Let me say it this way. Winston Churchill, he had a saying. He said, "You know, when you're young, and if you're not liberal, you don't have a heart. But when you get a little older, if you're not conservative, you don't have a brain." That came out in Winston Churchill's book. And he also says, by the way, "Never, never, never, never give up." And that's my theme. But anyway, of course, I'm interested in saving the county money. It's your money. We're in charge of, and I'm very interested in saving it. And, you know, I had an idea the other day that I, this is threatening, if I got to say it, I'm sorry. You didn't hear my idea.
I'm going to save the soul.
You know, I can't see a time that the party would matter in a decision that we make at the local level. I've always made a decision, didn't have any trouble doing that at the ranch and in the construction company. You have to do them, and you have to do them on a moment's notice. I am going to be conservative. At the ranch, we have to be, so I'll carry that through. But if somebody's got a good idea, I don't care who brought it up. And unlike the rest of Wyoming, we've never voted for the party. We've voted for the person. And I think that's kind of the way I am. If it's a good idea, we're going to run with it. Thank you.
I have to agree. I don't think that the party affiliation should have anything to do with a decision made by the county commissioners. Your natural instinct is going to be to go with your, the values that you have, but the party shouldn't really be the influence. Personally, I don't believe the commission should be a partisan position. I believe it should be right to city council and completely nonpartisan.
Well, the question really is very simple. I grew up in a very strong Christian family, Christian values, and those are treat your neighbors well. Your dollar is precious to you. I had six siblings, well, grew up in a family of six siblings. So, we penny pinched, and that's why I look at local government. And we penny pinch here. There's lots more things we could spend money on, but I believe that the values that I brought, that was raised with, is how I vote and how I make my decisions. It just happens that they line up with the Republican Party right now. If they came to me and said the Republican Party wants you to vote a certain way, and it clashes with my values, I will have no, no degree of decision when it comes to me making that decision. I will stick with my values, and I've always believed that. I have gone against... I have gone against what some people would consider the Republican way. So I, that's the way I've always looked at it. So thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, we can, feel free to, to pass us your questions if you have additional questions. The next question is, and it'll be candidate Laird, who will be answering first. Several candidates are advocating for more transparency with the Board of Commissioners and other county offices. What would more transparency actually look like, and how would you implement it? Or are you satisfied with the county's current level of transparency? Please give examples to illustrate your stance.
There can always be more transparency. I'll give you an example of what's going on now with these hearings, where people's taxes have been raised through the roof by the county assessor. And the, the County Commissioners Act is the state board of equalization. They're having hearings over there, and the, there's been reports to me that all of the evidence that the assessor uses to determine the value of your house isn't being given to the homeowner. Now, in court, I'm a lawyer, so if they use evidence against you, you're entitled to have it. The court will enforce the other side to give you their evidence so that you can review it. So one of the things that they had, Mr. Bartolio talked about, was this eagle eye program that takes pictures of your land overhead and can tell how big it is and whether anything's been added to it. And he thinks, for some reason, if they use that, they don't have to put that evidence forth to the people. And I disagree with that. If they're using it against the people, the people are, have a right, this isn't a Star Chamber hearing, they have a right to hear the evidence. So you have to be totally transparent in these offices.
Oh, transparency. It's another thing that I ran on the first time, and I got some stuff accomplished, too. We now are broadcasting on YouTube our hearings publicly. There being, there's a library now of those hearings, not only for the Board of Commissioners, but for the Parks Board, Planning and Zoning. You can go on there and see any of that. The zoning, use that as an example, or the mountain land use plan, that's, that's now in effect. We had, it's all online. We have tons of hearings. We ask for public comment, and we hold those public hearings. I agree with Mr. Laird on that evidence. However, it's not, that's a, that's evidentiary between the assessor and the petitioner. As commissioners, we can ask for that to be provided, but that is process between the assessor and the petitioner.
Thank you.
Transparency is important, and I think that there are some tangible things that can be done. I think that the assessor's office can provide more information to people before they even decide to appeal, so that they can make an informed decision whether to appeal or not, so that they can see what area you're classified in, what the comparable properties are. All of that should be done without having to either hire an attorney, and I handled a lot of those cases for clients over the years. And it, and it's a, it's a real challenge, and I've referred to it before as, as a game, and the rules of the game need to be changed. On transparency, you know, we can livestream our work session meetings, you know, not, not very many people go to those. They're open, but a lot of work is accomplished in work sessions, and I'd encourage the public to listen in, and I think we can make those public livestreamed.
I was on the board of St. Anthony's Tri Parish School, and we made a change in the, I think in the, in the schedule of the, of the, of the school, and some parents showed up and complained about it. And, and we said, we do open meetings. You can come to the meetings there at the same time all the time. You're always welcome. We have never turned any, anyone away. But they wanted us to change a decision that was made six months ago because they didn't show up for the meeting. Okay? And so, so, so knowing when the meetings are and showing up as a citizen is, is your responsibility for sure. Also, on the, the Board of Health, I was on the Casper, Natrona County Department of Health, we, we adhered very carefully to the open meetings law. We were very careful not to talk behind, outside of meetings. And all the meetings were open, they were published, you know, when they were, people could show up. And the final point I would make is that print media is very important, and we need to make sure that people have access to a print media with records.
So I mentioned in my opening statement, my little introduction, that I think that there are two sides to the transparency coin. So the first is providing information to the public, making that readily available. One area that I think that the county could improve on in this specific piece is with the budget. There is not a whole lot of information provided on revenue sources within the budget. That makes it kind of difficult to look at where money's coming from and maybe how we could improve. So that is something that I would like to see improved in terms of availability of information. The second side of the coin is making sure that people are involved in the process and that their voices are being heard. That is something that can always be improved. Of course, the meetings are open, and they're available to the public. The public can attend or can even watch online. But there are various different ways that you can try to make them more accessible to the public and engage the public in better ways. That might look like surveys, it could look like involving people in different committees.
Thank you.
Transparent, I want you to know, I've always been for open, let everybody know what's going on. It's important. We work for the people. I can think of two issues, though I have a little questions about. One is the hospital. We all know what I'm getting at when I say the hospital. Even though it was open, they had a couple of public meetings, but they didn't tell us much what was in that contract. So I have a little questions about that. I went to both of those public meetings, by the way. And the other one, did you know that there was 53 or around the wind towers going north of town on Ormsby Road in, in that area? Some did, but some didn't. You know, 53, the airport board originally came out against it, and so did the county planning and zoning. But the county commissioners still went with it. Recently, however, they decided to put it back.
Thank you.
They, they decided to delay it a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Kinda got lost on that a little bit, Terry. You know, it should be transparent, and Jim is exactly right. We started YouTubing our meetings, and that helps people that can't get down there. We YouTube our public meetings, you're, you're free to look at them all the time. The other thing is, all of our meetings that we have down there are listed, they're listed on the website, and they are all open to the public. Our budget hearings are open to the public. When, if you wanna know where the money's coming from, you can go in there, and you can sit in our budget hearings. It's kinda boring sometimes, but you can be there. It is open. All of our meetings are open to the public. And, and, you know, if you wanna know about the budget or anything else, show up at the meeting. They are open.
Since I, since I've become a candidate, I have been spending more time at the meetings, and I, I've learned quite a few things. The meetings are open to everyone, including the work sessions, but a lot of people work for a living, and it's gonna be real hard to make those meetings when they are during work hours. I don't see how we're gonna be able to do anything about that. Possibly piece an idea to livestream them would help so that people can, and with YouTube, maybe people can put the time in to go in after hours and see what went on. As far as the example, going to these meetings, I found out that we have roughly 30,000 acres set aside for a solar farm out northwest of town, or none. I had no idea that was happening. I understand it's been going on since, it started back in 2020. Talked to a lot of people, and nobody seems to know that it was happening. Not sure I like that. I don't call that transparent. Thank you.
Transparency is one of those, those buzzwords everybody likes to use. What I find fascinating is, no matter how much we do transparency, asking the public to engage, if it doesn't affect them, they don't get engaged. And as much as we try and spread the word, it's a challenge to get the public to come out and wanna participate. We'd love to have the public come out. The, the wind turbines, six hours, we listen to every single person. Board of Equalization, the thousands of hours that we have spent in those. The lack of understanding of how it works is fascinating. The hospital, there's a question about the hospital. We spent, I don't know how many days and days and days on that. Some of the brightest minds in Casper participated in it. The unfortunate thing was during COVID, the height of the pandemic and getting out, unfortunately, we didn't, just didn't, just didn't have the time. So thank you.
So everybody, with me being last, you've already heard a lot of ideas and stuff. And, and the current board of, or the current procedures that are in place are great for getting the information out there, if the people know where to find it and take the time to do it. Where I have promised transparency for my supporters and, and constituents is, on a personal level, is that I'm gonna tell you why I voted for something, why I supported something, why I didn't support something, and try to be more transparent that way so that the people that disagree with me can understand where I was coming from, and then the people that support me, you know, they also know where I'm coming to. So that's where I promise transparency is, just on a personal level, along with all the other avenues that are available by the current commissioners.
Thank you.
Candidate Mellon. What is your position on funding a new building for the Natrona County Library?
You gonna do anything, Lisa?
It actually, it did actually come from the voters, I promise.
No, actually, it's a good question, and it's apt to be in this room. So yes, the current building does have its problems. And yes, I am for a new library. We do have to take a look at it, work with the foundation, and any landowners that we're moving to, or how we're gonna work with the city on, on lands, and, and how that will work out. I am for it. The process to do it is a long road, and I'm not sure exactly how we're gonna get there, but it's gonna take a team effort, the county, the city, and the library, the library foundation.
I'm for it. We need a new library. And this is an old building. And, you know, it's got asbestos in it, a lot of that's been remediated. But this was a great building for a lot of years, and it's at what I believe is the end of functional life. So we need to do something. It's, it's complex. The, the funding issues are important, because nobody wants to, no one has the ability to just write a check and be done with it. So as Commissioner Mellon said, it is gonna be a team effort. We need to get as much private funds as we can involved. But yeah, the, the county commissioners, the Natrona County government is gonna be involved financially on that.
Yeah, I agree. Need a new library. If you read that plaque over there about Mr. Crawford, this is Crawford, if you read the plaque about Mr. Crawford, it was not easy. He went through a number of trials to get the funding for this thing, and a lot of times it was asking people to increase their taxes. This day and age, that's probably not gonna happen. You know, it's, we, you know, so, so asking people to vote for taxes is, is a tough, tough game this, these days. So what do you do? I don't know. I'm the odd man out, I'm the Democrat. You know, maybe there's a way to leverage federal funds to make it happen. A lot of our small hospitals around this state were built by something, I think it was called the Hill-Burton Act, that built a lot of our, our community hospitals. Maybe there's something there we can use.
I do support building a new library. Of course, the main question is funding. That's not something that's easy to overcome. That might be an area where we need to look into new, different, maybe more creative ways of raising revenue, because I do agree raising taxes is more than likely not going to happen, at least it hasn't in the past. So I don't know that we can necessarily rely on that coming our way in the future in order to do that. But as long as we can secure the funding, I absolutely would support it.
I had no idea you was gonna ask that question. No, of course I did. Only 'cause we're at the library. For 23 years, I sat across the street. I was a salesman for Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I would see people parking in our parking lot, walking across the street to use the library because they didn't have enough parking here. We didn't care, don't get me wrong, but I'd just look out the window and see people crossing the street all the time. How are we gonna pay for it? Well, we gotta think beyond the box. Maybe we need to put a, a library together with a new health department. Have the health department on one side, the library on the other side, or the library on the front side, and the health department on the back side. And, you know, this, it's got, the one set projects are coming up. Maybe we should use more of the one set, and the city ought to help us, 'cause a lot of, majority of the people that use the library are in the city of Casper. And of course, the city of Casper is part of the county, too.
Thank you.
Well, I, there ain't no getting on that red. So anyway, thank you.
I think the last election, I said the next building we would build in Natrona County would be a library. But a couple of years ago, we had something called COVID come up, and, and we all hate it. I think it's made people nuts. But nevertheless, we had it happen. And we ended up getting money from the federal government, and it went right to the county, and it was because of COVID. And so it's a perfect opportunity to address the health department. The state of Wyoming also pitched in. So we're gonna have to put a little in that, hopefully not a whole lot, but that's the next building. But I will say that I think we do need a library, and, and we've tried to go to the voters, and it's been voted down, it's been very close. I supported both of them. And, and we need to make it happen. When we get done paying off the old original jail, maybe we can bond it and build a library. I don't know. It's, we need to figure out something.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. We definitely need to do something. The library is a big issue for an awful lot of people. Sadly, the voters don't seem to want, the people that actually go to the ballot or fill out a ballot, don't seem to want to agree that we all need to get this thing supported. I'm not certain that we need to build a new building. Like to see the possibility of maybe using another building that already exists. Maybe that would be a less expensive way to get it done. We definitely need to get something done to get the library up and running. The county should be able to come up with at least enough to help convince the city to put their part in. Thank you.
I was, I was asked this same question when I was appointed, and I said unequivocally, I fully support a new library. If it comes down to using taxpayers' dollars, I believe the taxpayers have a say in that. And, and they've already done that twice and said, no. They don't, they don't want any more taxes. There is a constitutional amendment that's gonna be in the November ballot that will allow local governments to invest their long-term funds the very same way that the state does, the way pensions do, with professional money managers. If that were to pass, we can take the proceeds that we receive from the hospital and generate enough in revenues that we can do revenue bonds and build a new library.
Libraries have been a staple of a community since, you know, forever. I mean, communities are built in and around the libraries. I would support a new building, but again, it's gonna all depend upon its funding. The county, the people of Natrona County have already said no twice. To try to go around them and fund it with tax dollars other ways could lead to a voter flashback. It's my understanding that the library does have alternative ways to receive funding. So, maybe we need to look at that along with some more other creative ways to try to come up with funding. My concern with taking federal money is that there's no such thing as a free lunch. There are always strings attached to federal money. So, in doing so, I think we may better make sure that we read the details when it comes to taking federal money.
So, you know, I heard all that. Every one of them's in favor of a new library, but you don't have a new library. And some of them have been in office a long time when they said that you needed a new library, and you haven't got a new library. Now, how do you get a new library? It takes money. Sixth Cent isn't going to give it to you. The Fifth Cent isn't going to give it to you. I tried to talk the city into it, and the bulk of the city didn't want to put money into the library. But guess where there's $114 million right now? That's what these guys got out of the hospital when they sold the hospital. That money's in the bank. Why not use it for a new library? You could ask Mr. Bertollio that. Now, I will tell you, there are those that say that hospital was worth $450 million, and they undersold it significantly. And I think when you start looking into transparency, you're going to find that out. But you want a new library, we got to have money. Of course, I want a new library. But I'm like everybody else, where do we get the money? But they have some in the bank.
Okay, I think we're now, let's see. To, yeah, candidate Nicolason. Thank you. Pass in the mic. Okay. Since the one cent tax for the water line from Casper to Midwest and Edgerton was voted down, how would you plan to pay for the repair?
I think that Midwest and Edgerton get forgotten a lot. They are important parts of this county, historically and still today. There are substantial revenues from that Salt Creek field that come out of the ground every day. And every day, there are revenues that go to the people of the city of Casper and the rest of the county that benefit, reap the benefit from that. I think it was a sad day when that failed. I think that maybe there were different, there could have been some different marketing strategies used. But I think we've got to get that done for the people of Midwest and Edgerton. And I think it needs to happen soon because that's a big potential safety issue. I think there may be some federal monies involved. But again, that's going to be one that I think the county needs to participate in.
Yeah, I'm just going to ditto what Pete said. I mean, everything that Salt Creek Field and Midwest has given to this county should be well-understood, and we need to give them decent drinking water.
So, that vote really just shows the fact that residents of Natrona County really don't want their taxes being raised. I understand that definitely Midwest and Edgerton are an important part of the county. We shouldn't forget about them. But the voters have spoken, and it's clear that it's not going to be easy for us to raise taxes to get the money that we need to do projects like this. I would start probably by looking at federal money grants. I believe that there's some money available there, so I would start with that. But ultimately, we, like I've said, we were going to have to start getting a little bit more creative and not default to just raising taxes for every single project.
I'm going to have to ask you to repeat the question.
I would be happy to. Since the one cent tax for the water line from Casper to Midwest and Edgerton was voted down, how would you plan to pay for the repair?
The way I would do it is take $2 million out of the hospital money and pay for it that way. That, I understand that hospital money was, at one time, one of the commissioners said, I forget which one it was, said they're going to put it away for future health problems. But what's more important than health than water? And they can certainly take $2 million out of that $116 million and help pay for that water line between Midwest and Edgerton. And by the way, I'm the only commissioner, ex-commissioner, excuse me, that I've been to all six municipality city councils. You know, government's always been my big thing, local government. I loved it since I was a scout and scout. Cub Scouts through Explorer Scouts. I just, I was even an intern out of Washington for a congressman. I was going to say that. For Tina Runcolio, I was out there for about five months.
Thank you.
Anyway, but that's what I would do, is use two of that million dollars.
Thank you.
I think we do need to fix that water line. And it would be interesting to see if those were on the ballot independently, whether it would have passed or failed. The thing I would say, though, is the wind towers that are going to go up there have to go through industrial siding. And I think some of that industrial siding money needs to go to fix that water line. And there'll be both industrial siding money on the wind towers and the solar farm. And that's the kind of money that'll go to fix that. I've also, I talked to the wind tower companies. And I said, you're going to have to have water for your cement, 300 and some yards per tower. You ought to fix that line and then get some water out of it for your use, and then the city of Midwest and Edgerton have it. But we aren't, as long as I'm here, I'm not going to forget about our small towns. It didn't just Midwest and Edgerton. There's Evansville, Barna, and Mills. I always think of those small towns.
Well, sadly, unlike Terry, I didn't make it to the budget meeting, so I don't know exactly where all the money is. But I'm sure with the amount of income that the county does generate, both like Pete said, from the minerals from Salt Creek fields and the rest of the fields around the entire county, should be able to come up with, if it's only $2 million, I know that's a lot to those of us that don't have any, but doesn't sound like a lot to somebody as large as the county. Thank you.
All the way down to candidate Millen. Yep, you're good.
Oh, okay, okay. So, first off, I have a question whether or not the county can actually invest in it. Because state statute says county government, as an extension of the state, cannot participate in enterprise-type operations, which water is. How I would support it is there's ARPA money out there available right now at the state. Salt Creek Joint Powers Board is making an application. And I would ask that every single municipality as well as join us in pushing our legislators to get with the statewide elected officials and get this done. This is not a situation where we can sit back and wait till it breaks. Spending hospital money is like spending one window at a time. The commissioners, when we got into this, said we were going to keep this whole as a corpus and use it for the future and live off the earnings of that. If we start spending it, it's going to disappear.
I'm going to agree with Rob on this, that if it had been on the ballot by itself, it might have passed. A lot of the feedback that I heard was, it was more of a vote against the downtown project and not against the Midwest project. So, I'd like to see it back on the ballot as a standalone issue with no pet projects attached to it.
I don't think it would have passed, was by itself, from what I understood from the city and what happened in that election. But I want to say one thing. Peter Nicolason said something at our meeting in the park, and I totally agreed with him. And it's something that haunts me. And here's what it is. He said he believed in the golden rule, and so do I. And you all know what the golden rule is. Treat other people like you yourself want to be treated. Now, why haven't we built a pipeline for water for the people out in Midwest and Salt Creek? These guys have, he's been, he's been in government for 25 years. Rob's been down there for all these years. It's easy to come here and say, I'll build you a big old library, and then don't do anything. But if you treat other people like you yourself want to be treated, you know, you get water to your people. You get a library to your people. You get a hospital to your people.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to come at this a little different angle. That's strictly because I used to be a resident up in Midwest. When I was a deputy, that's where I lived. At that time, that's when the first water line came through. The towns did a bond issue, and that's how it was paid. This project, this repair, this replacement of the water line is vital for that community. They don't have a well that they can rely on up there. I differ with those that say that if the taxes had been separate or together, it didn't matter. You know, I think it did. I think that the wealth being of our fellow citizens, of those people within our community, we take care of our own. And I think the voters would have came, stood up and taken care of our own. We would have passed that for Midwest and Edgerton. It's no different than, you know, your neighbor across the street. Hopefully, you get along with them.
All right. So, we're going to try and combine some audience questions with a couple of questions that we have here. Do you agree with the current priorities reflected in the 2022-2023 Natrona County budget? And how much does that budget rely on the revenue generated by our property taxes?
Yeah, I'm going to mostly defer. I'm not an expert in the budget, for sure. My understanding is we collect revenue, and there's a certain amount that we use to, for the college and for all of the departments that the commissioners oversee. And the priorities are maintain infrastructure, increase or repair infrastructure and improve infrastructure when we need to. My priorities would be definitely public health, safety, and quite frankly, pollution is something I'm particularly interested in. So, without perfect knowledge of the budget, I'm just going to pass on most of that. Thanks.
Yes, I do agree with the priorities in the budget as far as how much of it comes from property taxes. My understanding is that it's a fairly large amount. But like I talked about before, in my own research into the budget, it's kind of difficult to determine exactly what the revenue sources are and how much comes from each different source. The best that I was able to find was a pie chart that listed like three different general revenue sources, but nothing really specific. So, it's hard for me to get into the nitty-gritty on that. But yes, I do agree with priorities, and it seems like there is a large portion that comes from property taxes.
I have a copy of the budget. I must have left it at home, but I agree with it. I went to several of those budget meetings. The only thing I quite, I have a little problem with, they gave a dollar raise to some of the employees, a $2 raise. And then they raised their insurance. I know insurance goes up every year, unfortunately. I understand that. I sold it for a long time, for 25 years. But I think they could have done a little bit more for their employees. But other than that, I think they did a good budget. I know how it is. I was down there for a long time. It's not easy. It's not easy. You got to work within your budget. I was a commission salesperson, and I had some good times and bad times. So, I certainly know how to budget. Thank you.
Yeah, the question, part of it was that how much of the revenue is from the taxpayer? I will tell you, it's about a third or a little less of our budget is from taxes. Most of the tax money that the individuals pay in this county goes to the schools. 76% go to the schools. And there's special districts in there, but that's about the figure. As far as the priority, it's police and health, or the sheriff and health. Those are our priorities, roads. And that's a big part of the budget. That'd be about a third or a little more of the budget. So, that's kind of where that sits.
I was going to say, even though I didn't make it to the meeting, I have managed to find that it is about, like Rob said, about 30% of our property taxes that goes to the, to that part of the budget. But, and the schools take a huge amount, and yet, I keep hearing that our kids aren't getting the education we're paying for. Need to work on that. Otherwise, I, like Brianna, didn't get quite all the details that I'd like to have out of it. So, I'll pass it along. Sorry. Thank you.
Yes, the budget, property taxes anywhere from a quarter or a third, depending on what's going on. It really doesn't change. The challenge gets to be that we have more needs than we have revenues. So, when you talk about cutting ours, a 20% cut amounts to a huge chunk to the general fund and our ability to provide services. The 20%, you would hardly even notice in your property tax because it's 1/36th of what you'd see. So, our revenue stream is so convoluted. It comes from so many different sources. It is a challenge to understand where it comes from. We get some one-time payments that we rely on that come from the federal government. So, it's a challenge to do budgeting when you're looking at revenues that show up late to the, when you're doing the budget process.
I don't know if I'd like to be the person who's trying to figure out the budget right now, especially with the property values going up and down, up and down. I know my property values have been amended twice this year alone. With that being said, the priorities of, you know, first responders, infrastructure, those that have the most impact in the community should always be first. As long as, you know, the revenues stay the same, then I think everybody should expect the same funding down the road. But with this booming recession, and we're not sure what's going to happen over the next couple of years, there may be a loss in revenue. And as a county, we need to be prepared to make some hard choices when it comes down to it.
Can you read that question one more time, please?
Certainly. Do you agree with the current priorities reflected in the 2022-2023 Natrona County budget? And how much does that budget rely on revenue from property tax?
There are several things I don't agree with in their budget. But just so you know, the county clerk prepares the budget, and then the commissioners wrangle it around in meetings and decide on what they want to do there. But the money comes from a property tax called the ad valorem tax. There's also the state shared revenue, severance taxes, nicotine tax, wind energy tax, money from the federal government. If you care to see the list of where they get the money, it's right here. You can Google it. Now, the one thing I didn't like was, has anybody in here ever got a 40% raise? Anybody? Stand up if you got a 40% raise. Now, these guys should all stand up because they got a 40% raise. And then I've got the letter that they sent out giving people a $1 raise while the, while the, as Terry says, the cost of insurance is going up. They really get less money. They get less money. So, come on. The heads of the, the heads of the county got $28,000 a year raises. So, I don't like that either.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty. So, where's the budget come from? I think that was covered pretty well. Where it needs to be spent, in my mind, infrastructure, emergency services, operations, and employees. It's always been that way. That's where it needs to stay. The, you have your needs, you have your wants, and you have your wishes. You have to take care of those needs first. It's just like your budget at home. You don't go out to the movies when you're looking at trying to put food. You don't go out to the movies when you're looking at, trying to put food on the table. As far as, I want to make one correction, though. I didn't receive a raise. Not one penny. I'm not going to either if I don't get reelected. That raise that he's referencing, there hasn't been one for a commissioner since, what, 10 years? Eight years or so?
No, since 2008.
2008. I'm not going to receive it. Dave North back there, he's not going to receive it either until he comes up for election. Nobody's going to receive any kind of raise until after election.
So if you look at the budget, the priorities are clearly law enforcement and public safety and roads and bridges. That's infrastructure, that's the sheriff's office. Those are the biggest parts, and I, I agree with those being priorities. The county property taxes constitute, are estimated at this point, estimated, to be just over $17 million of a $56 million budget. Okay, so that gives you an idea of, of the 56 million. We're hoping that 17 is derived from property taxes. The rest is from a lot of the other sources that, that have been mentioned or alluded to. I, I think we need to do more, though, for our employees, and, and we're working on that. We're, we're going to have, we hope, a brand-new plan, a step and grade plan before the end of the year. So we'll prioritize that as well.
Thank you.
Canada Smith, you'll be the one to, this will be the last question. We think that it'll be a good one for a, maybe a more rapid response. It's kind of a quick, even 30-second answer, and I think we have time for that. The question is, does the county need a county administrator? Why or why not?
I don't know that it is necessary at this point in time. I don't want to lock myself into that answer, though. So I am, I am open to evidence pointing in the opposite direction, but I, I don't think at this point that it would be necessary.
I would say no, not now. Absolutely not. The county commissioners, the current county commissioners, they, they just gave themselves a 40% raise, as we just talked about. We don't, we, I'm not we, I'm not a county commissioner, but I used to be. But anyway, no, this is no time to get a 40% raise and then turn around and hire a county administrator. Absolutely not. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be short and sweet and to the point. A county administrator is going to cost us $130,000 to $150,000 a year, plus a car. And, and I think that's too much money to have, to pay somebody to do what we're doing. We can do it. That's what you hire us to do. And I would rather see that kind of money go into more raises, which we're going to talk about in the next six months. We've, we've told our employees that we're going to talk about that and, and possibly do a step and grade. And, and so we need to take care of them some more, but I don't think now's the time.
Well, I totally agree with Rob. There's no way that the, if the money's that tight already with the county, there's no way we can add another employee at the commission level or any other level like that. It's going to be way too expensive for an administrator. They, no matter who they are, they don't come change. And part of the reason for having five commissioners is so that you have a way to break any kind of a tie in an opinion. That's the point. So I don't, I just don't see the need for an administrator. And the budget certainly hasn't got room for it. Thank you.
We have, in the past couple of years, talked about it. It's going to cost at least $300,000 or $400,000 because you can't just have an administrator. You have to have an administrative assistant, all the other things that go along with it. And we have, as a commission, taken upon our, each individually have taken upon ourselves to kind of break that up. Commissioner Milne has done lots in the realm of zoning and subdivision. Commissioner North in the back has done a lot with the mountain. Rob's done a lot with road and bridge. I do a lot with finance. Peter Nicolason will probably find his niche shortly. He's still learning. He'll tell you he's still learning. But I don't, it would be interesting to see what job description you could put to, to an individual and then go out there and see if you could afford it, and I don't think we could ever afford one, so. I think that's part of the reason why commissioners get what they get.
Thank you.
The last thing this county needs is a hired bureaucrat that can't be removed from office. At least as a county commissioner, you can vote us out. But once you hire another bureaucrat, it'll be, take more than an act of Congress to get him removed if you don't like what he's doing. So I'd absolutely be against a county administrator.
They had a county administrator once a few years back. That's when they only made $5,000 a year and you did this job for community service. Because some of us aren't at this for the money. I'm not running because of any money. The same is on the city council now. Whether we need a city administrator or whether we can afford one, I would say that's probably a big issue right now because money is a big issue. But to just mention, when they say they don't give themselves a, a $10,000 raise, I don't get that. Because the only way they don't get it is if you vote them out of office. See exactly what Jim said. He won't get it if you vote him out of office. And I think it was too big of a raise, especially when you turn around and buy a letter, you give your employees a dollar an hour raise in, in some instances.
Short and sweet, huh? So in a perfect world, having an administrator would be awesome. Because you would be able to maintain that continuity of projects throughout the years through the change of the board of commissioners. Can we afford it? Is it necessary? Absolutely not. My activities today, group, I spent two and a half, three hours on planning zoning for the mountain today. It's what we do.
Yeah, this isn't city council. This isn't the city of Casper. This isn't a city manager. We don't need that. We don't want that. We're here to work for the citizens of the county. And there's management and administration that goes on every single day of every single week. And, and I'm, I'm loving it. So anyway, we don't need a county administrator.
Thanks for the softball question. Doesn't sound like it's a good idea.
Thank you. And we are at our final concluding statement. So you have a minute to share whatever you would like with the voters. Thank you, and we'll start with you, candidate.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's been an honor to be here, and I really like local government. All my life, that's all I've done is local government. I've been in the J.C.'s, the Quonis Club. I know that's not government. But we was talking about raises. I brought these two checks. When I was first on the city council, 1985, 1986, I got $10 a year. $10 a year. I'm going to, one of these days, I'm going to cash them, and I want interest money. I just wanted to show you. But I, I'd really appreciate your vote. It means a lot to be, to be involved in county government. Or it's, it, like I said, it's been my life. And I'm a people person, and I get all over town, and I don't have another job. That's all I would have to do. I'd spend my time down the county. I wouldn't drive them crazy, but by God, if I didn't like something, I'd let them know it. So thank you very much. Bye. Bye.
Well, thanks for being here, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for having this tonight and, and some interesting questions. I appreciate that. I will tell the, everybody out there that we have a good commission right now. We work well together. We're a cohesive group. That doesn't mean we don't have disagreements. We have them, but we talk it out, and, and we have a good commission. So I would, I would appreciate your vote, and thank you for having me.
Again, thank the League of Women Voters, the library for putting us on, having everybody here. Thank you all for coming and putting your questions in, giving us something to think about. One of the things I would like to mention, my experience with large budgets like this, I actually got that from doing a term on the Natrona County Predator Management Board. I was very surprised how much money those guys have to deal with. It's going to be a lot more. But it still has to be done judiciously, and keep in mind, it's just like you budget at home. If you don't have it, you can't spend it. Thanks again. I appreciate your vote.
I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity tonight. I, I really do enjoy this job. It is a job, and it's also a passion. It takes a lot of time away from my family. For example, my wife is down in Denver. I'm here. This is important to me. So I oftentimes put family secondary and have done this on more than one occasion over the years because I do believe that when I commit to the people of Natrona County, that I'm going to be here. That means I am going to be here. So I bring a wealth of experience. Some people may say that throw the bones out. Well, wait till you get into the trenches and find out a learning curve, and you do want some experience in there. So I would very much appreciate your vote.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and giving us a chance to visit with all of you. I'm the only one here that was not born and raised here in Natrona County, but I do have roots here. I have my small business and an extended fam, excuse me, an extended family that I have picked up in the 10 years that I've been here. I believe that as a small business owner and a veteran, and even maybe even an outsider, that I could bring a diversity of thought and maybe bring forth some ideas and solutions that maybe have not been thought of before. And so I would appreciate your vote on August 16th.
So I'm passionate about being a person from Natrona County, Wyoming. I don't, I'm not running for the money. I wouldn't have given myself a raise and then did what they did to the, to the employees. Because the employees really are the ones that run the county. And I found that out being on the city council. You got to be good to your employees. You got to take care of them. Some of those ladies at the courthouse that give you your license plates are making $34,000 a year and haven't had a raise in four years. These guys have given 30, they're making $35,000. They gave themselves a raise, whether they want to say they gave themselves a raise because they're all together, they all want to be reelected. And so if, if we, if we don't get new blood and we don't have change, you get the same old, same old. Because you'll be back here in a couple of years. You still won't have a library. We'll wonder what happened to the $114 million they got for the hospital. And if you all knew what really happened in the hospital and what's going on in the hospital right now, other than Mr. Nicolason who wasn't there, you wouldn't vote for one of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right. I too would like to thank ladies for inviting us out and for y'all, for attending, and those of you that may watch. You know, I'm just hitting my stride. It, it was a long haul trying to learn this position. And I, I think I have the experience and to serve this county a little bit more. As a former employee of this county, when I was a deputy sheriff, I understand you take care of the county employees. I know that, and that's been my intention and what I've done throughout this career. I'd suggest or ask that you take a look at the facts of what's going on, not just listen to rhetoric out there. But look for yourself to see what's going on. Don't rely on me. Don't rely on Peter or anybody else to tell you the information. Go find it for yourself and see what is actually going on. That's the way you'll know whether I'm just talking or not.
So already, thank you both. Thank you again. We appreciate this, appreciate the opportunity. It's an important time for our community. It's an important time for our country. But, but this is a, like I said, this is a job that requires administrative business experience. I, I think I've got that. And I think that those of you that know me know that I'm dedicated to my clients. I'm dedicated to my family. I'm dedicated. If, if it's part of my job, it's going to get done. This is part of my job, and, and I'm so dedicated to the, the people of Natrona County. I've said before, there are 80,000 people in the county and 5,300 square miles, and I, I want to represent them all and, and work for the entire county. So I appreciate your vote, August 16th or before. Thank you.
I appreciate the work that the county commissioners have done. I think they do a good job. I'm not running because I have a bone, because I have a bone, I'm not running because I have a bone to pick or a chip on my shoulder. I, I appreciate the work they do. I am a downtown Casper homeowner. I am a property owner up on the mountain, and I'm a local physician who knows about healthcare and our healthcare system, if you want to call it that. And I think I have a lot to offer along those lines.
So thanks again to the League of Women Voters for putting this on and to the library for hosting the space, and to all of you who came out and volunteered your time to come in and listen to us and, and educate yourselves a little bit on the positions that we hold before the primary. I have told you about my priorities and, and my positions on certain issues. I do think, you know, we've talked a lot about experience tonight and how important experience is. I am not a complete outsider to local government. I am on the school board, so I do have some idea of what it takes to run a board and to be on, in an elected position. But I think that I would bring a fresh perspective and a new face to the county commission, and I think that that is something that would be valuable, most definitely. So I do ask for your vote on August 16th, and I thank you all again for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to the candidates for participating this evening, and thank you again for all of you for coming out to be informed voters when you go and fill out your ballots between now and August 16th, that primary day. As well as thank you to the Natrona County Library for hosting us here. Another quick note as to how you can be informed when you go to the polls. You might be seeing these around town. This is a link to our Vote 411. This is an online voter's guide. And this is hosted by the National League of Women Voters. This is a project of the National League that the state of Wyoming has been participating. The state league has prepared all of our statewide races. And here, our Casper League of Women Voters, we have prepared all of the 55 candidates and 18 different races that we have here in Natrona County as well. So definitely be sure to check out Vote 411. Read those candidate responses so that way you know exactly who will best represent you when you go to the polls on August 16th. Thank you. As well for moderating.
Don't, don't run away. Yeah, you do. Don't run away.